Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Everyone to the Pittsburgh Common Council for the March 11, 2025 meeting. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting. And please stand up for the page of allegiance. Next is a broad call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Danczer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhurth.
Here.
Alder Herbst is absent with excuse. Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
He is zooming. Alder Baffadari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a court, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So next item on the agenda is public appearance for non-agenda items and new appointments. So we have a couple of major proclamations. So we're going to start with the first. And first, I want to say thank you to Alder Baffadari and Alder Gerhurth for writing and drafting this proclamation. So.
Recognizing March as Women's History Month, honoring the role of women in leadership, and affirming the need to protect and advance women's rights. Whereas the month of March has been designated nationally as Women's History Month to honor and celebrate the vital role of women in American history. And.
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, state, and community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And.
Whereas women have been instrumental in shaping our society through leadership roles in government, business, education, healthcare, science, the arts, and countless other fields. And.
Whereas women have been instrumental in shaping our society through leadership roles in government, business, education, healthcare, science, the arts, and countless other fields. Oh, did I just read that one?
Yeah.
You just read that one.
I just read that, yeah.
The advancement of women in leadership strengthens communities by fostering diverse perspectives, equitable policies, and inclusive decision-making. And.
Whereas despite significant progress, barriers to leadership and equal representation persist. And continued efforts are necessary to ensure that all women have the opportunity to lead and succeed. And.
Whereas women continue to face challenges due to systemic inequalities, wage disparities, underrepresentation in leadership, and legislative efforts that seek to undermine access to reproductive healthcare, workspace protections, and other fundamental rights. And.
Whereas the city of Pittsburgh recognizes the importance of uplifting and supporting women in leadership, advocating for policies that promote gender equity, and opposing any legislation that seeks to roll back the rights and freedoms of women.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor, along with the Common Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March as a Women's History Month. In Pittsburgh, I encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the achievements of women throughout history, the importance of women in leadership, and the ongoing pursuit of gender equity. And be it further resolved that the city of Pittsburgh affirms its commitment to advancing policies and initiatives that support the rights of women and opposes any effort that seeks to undermine their freedoms and opportunities. This is proclaimed this 11th day of March of 2025. Okay, so we're going to take the picture. Okay, so we have another proclamation. And I want to thank Alder Jetser and Alder Baffadari for also drafting this one. So go ahead.
Encouraging the federal government to continue its tradition of funding solutions for a strong nation. Whereas the city of Pittsburgh, like many municipalities across the United States, relies on federally authorized grant programs to support a variety of essential initiatives, such as critical infrastructure projects that connect residents to our businesses and enable safe transportation for our children, the hiring of public safety personnel, and purchase of protective gear, facilitation of real estate development, increased tree canopy to enhance human health and neighborhood character, and other vital community projects. And.
Whereas the Federal Office of Management and Budget issued a directive on January 27, 2025, instructing federal agencies to pause the disbursement of federal financial assistance under a wide variety of programs, jeopardizing local projects, and creating uncertainty for municipalities, including the city of Pittsburgh, one of Wisconsin's fastest-growing cities. And.
Whereas this action threatens our ability to accommodate vibrant and growing business and residential communities. And.
Whereas withholding duly authorized federal funding creates economic volatility, hindering the city's capacity to deliver on commitments made to businesses and residents. And.
Whereas the future stability and growth of our municipality rely on sustained and predictable federal investment in key programs. And.
Whereas cities across the country, including through the National League of Cities and U.S. Conference of Mayors, have expressed opposition to this action and are urging federal agencies to fulfill their obligations under existing grant agreements.
So now, therefore, in recognition of the federal government's longstanding tradition of a commitment to supporting local municipalities in furtherance of economic growth and prosperity for our great nation, I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, along with the Common Council, proclaim our commitment to protecting the federal funding that has been allocated for the benefit of city residents and urge Wisconsin's congressional delegation to advocate for the release of federal funds that have been legally appropriated by Congress and for the continuation of the federal grants program. This is proclaimed this 11th day of March of 2025. Okay, we are not going to take picture for this. Okay, so we have David Harford. He wishes to speak for a non-agenda item. David. Do you want to say that you want to speak? It's a consent agenda item. It's a consent agenda item. We are not going to discuss. This is a consent agenda item. It's part of the consent agenda items.
We're going to refer it to committees, and it'll come back on April 8 for a vote.
But you can.
You're not going to vote on that, you know.
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now I need a motion for a consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any question or comment?
I'd request we pull out item four.
Item four. Okay. Are all those in favor of? What do you want to do, remove it?
Yeah, and.
I would just approve without that.
Well, approve the consent agenda without item four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of the consent agenda without item four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Jay?
Yeah, the reason I asked this to be pulled out is because it seems. I feel really uncomfortable moving this forward without having a more formal public input process. And I don't think that doing this at the council on April 8 is the best way to do that. I think we should have a formal public hearing, since the residents not six months ago just voted down the referendum that we had put forward. So I would like us to delay this until we have a formal public hearing on it.
So I think what I want to say is that we have been discussing this for many, many months. The council had the opportunity to discuss in January, committed the whole. And I think that we are going to give the opportunity to the resident for a month because we are not. The council is not going to vote for this until April 8. And the city today have released a lot of information through the website, press release. And so I think that there's going to be plenty of opportunity for residents to contact us, and they can learn more about this, so.
I understand. I just would feel more comfortable with a formal public hearing, a formal, noticed public hearing.
So how do you ambition it with a public hearing?
What's that?
How do you ambition this?
I would just envision a public hearing like we do for.
We can have a public hearing right or late.
For hundreds of other things that we do.
Yeah, we can have a public hearing on April 8.
Well, I would prefer it to be a noticed public hearing, not just part of the regular agenda, but a noticed public hearing like we do with plan commission items that require a public hearing and other things like that. That's why, that's all I wanted to discuss.
Any comments, discussion?
So if we're going to move forward with it on April 8, that's fine. But I think we need to notice this as a public hearing and get it published as a public hearing.
How does that differ from? How do you mean, you know? Because if we have. If we have it on the council agenda, that's publicly noticed.
We go through the. But with a public hearing, we go through the trouble of publishing it separately and calling it out as something that the residents might have more interest in than other things.
So if we have a separate notice, but we have it at the same meeting, is that okay?
That's fine with me. I just think we need to give people an adequate opportunity because nobody reads through the agendas. Come on.
I think a lot of people read the agenda.
Well, some people do. But most people don't read through council agendas. I mean, seriously.
I would just note that I would want to consult with the city attorney before committing to when the public hearing would be to make sure that we comply with the legal requirements for such notice. I don't know what the timeframe is off the top of my head.
Well, this particular item probably doesn't really have a legal requirement as it would be. It's not a plan commission item. It's not something that requires us mailing notice to neighbors within a 300-foot radius or anything like that. It's just a. It would just be our own public hearing. And I think noticing it as such, you know, calling it out on the city's website, making sure residents have as much opportunity to know about it as possible is a good thing.
Yeah, we are doing all of that.
So this is voted on in the next month.
Yeah, April 8.
Because we have to skip the next meeting because of spring break.
Yeah.
So I think to Alder Allen's point, we could maybe feed two birds with one scone here and not have a separate meeting to add another meeting. But make sure as Alders that, you know, we're sharing here and we're sharing amongst our communities that this will be a topic in the next meeting. And like all city council meetings, if you'd like to come and comment on it or reach out to your Alder beforehand, plenty of people have already reached out. I would say I disagree that people don't look ahead in agenda items. I can show you the number of emails we've received, which we are grateful for. We're always grateful for the emails. So I don't see a reason to have a separate hearing on it. I do agree with you, Alder Allen, that we do need public feedback as much as possible. I don't think procedurally, I'm super committed to needing a separate meeting. But I like the idea of sharing it within our community.
The city did issue a statement. At 2:25 PM, I got a news flash about the vehicle registration fee for the transportation project. So we are doing more public notice for this particular item than we typically do for an agenda item. And we have a month of notice versus we typically have two weeks of notice for an agenda item before a discussion.
And there is a new page on the website explaining this and.
I understand all that. I just. My. Because this is a big deal. My preference is that we. And I'm not calling for a separate meeting. I'm saying we can have the public hearing on April 8.
So it's this. But I think you need to be really clear with your words. Is it a public hearing, a separate meeting? Or is it?
No.
If people want to. Let me finish. If people want to give input, they can come to the normal city council meeting and speak on an agenda item, just like every other agenda item. That's what we're saying, right? Because I'm all for. Legally, we have to honor that, right? I think we're all for that. I'm trying to understand what you're proposing. If you're proposing a separate meeting, that's one thing.
No, I'm not proposing a separate meeting at all. I've said that twice now, that we can do the public hearing on April 8.
Yeah.
But normally, when we do a public hearing, we notice it on the agenda as a public hearing. It appears usually near the top of the agenda. It's not buried three pages down. And there's also a separate email list that the city has for public hearings. And we notice people that way. And I just think getting as much public input on this item is important. That's just my view. I mean, you may all disagree with me, but I think this is a big deal.
So procedurally, how do we move forward with this, Jen?
I would want to consult with the city attorney to confirm whether or not we have any legal timelines to meet to officially notice it as a public hearing. Obviously, there's different notices, Class I, Class II, Class III, I believe.
Yes.
If you're not asking for it to be published in the State Journal, the city's official newspaper, then obviously that may give us some flexibility since this is not a statutorily required public hearing. So I can report back to the common council if the council is indicating that they would like to include a public hearing as part of the agenda for the April 8 council meeting.
But that wouldn't be until the April 8 council meeting.
But what I want to mention is the residents have all the right to come next week and, you know, make the comments, you know. This is what I said. I want to understand what the difference between.
I'm asking for more notice to the public about what we're intending to do here. That's all.
Okay.
So we want. We want the. We want it. You just want it at the top of the agenda, is what you want. You want.
Where the public hearings normally go, right?
It's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
If we're legally able to put public hearing at the top of the April 8 agenda for the vehicle registration fee, we will agenda it that way. It sounds as though the council is fine with that. If we are unable to legally agenda it that way, obviously, we'll continue to utilize methods that have been already announced today to communicate that. I think Alder Baffadari mentioned that Alders could utilize their own distribution channels and networks also. I was going to mention in my administrator's report the fact that a site with an FAQs, as well as social media and media releases have all been put out this afternoon to notify the public of this particular agenda item. So there has been efforts made by the city to inform its residents of this particular resolution.
I'll move to refer item four as laid out in the referral sheet with the direction to staff as discussed, potentially include this with some more calling out in the agenda.
Second.
I have a question during the discussion part of this. So moving it to where you're moving it, this is just allowing folks to like come at the beginning of this meeting and make comments where we don't talk back to them.
Right, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you want? Okay, that's fair.
Okay, all those in favor of moving item four to the next April 8 meeting with the recommendation made by Alder Allen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item. To move Resolution R 5925, our deferred loan for Uptown Hills workforce housing development, to right now on the agenda. And that's item 11A3.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of moving Resolution R 5925 up to the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so Gabriela.
Yes, so I will move approval of Resolution R 5925, directing staff to negotiate a deferred loan for the Uptown Hills workforce housing development.
Second.
Okay, so we have a public comment by David Harford. David, can you come to the microphone? He wishes to speak in opposition. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Helford. I live at 2621 Typerlywick Drive in Pittsburgh. And I'm definitely against this resolution for using tax dollars to provide a deferred loan, a 15-year deferred loan at 2% interest to a developer who can't make his project work. You've got a project here where it's costing $10,251,000 for 24 units. That's $427,000 a unit. Part of that is a $1.2 million fee, developer's fee. My first suggestion would be tell the developer to knock off $330,000 of his developer's fee instead of using $330,000 of property tax dollars to provide a deferred loan that we're going to get back in 15 years. You've got a project here where you're trying to provide affordable housing. Where is it the responsibility of the city of Pittsburgh and its residents to provide a loan to a developer to make the project work? You're providing access to a $427,000 unit to people who have median incomes of less than 30%, less than 50%, and less than 80% of the area median income. There are a lot of people that can't afford to buy a $427,000 house. And you're going to provide a vehicle for them plus provide a deferred loan because the developer can't make the project work? If you go through the numbers on this project where you put in rent income and do all the assumptions about what the expenses are in this project, this project generates, if you have no vacancies, about $500,000 of rent income a year. It has $527,000 approximately of operating expenses. So you've got $27,000 a year cash outflow for a project that really doesn't work economically. And you're going to provide a $330,000 deferred loan, giving the developer 15 years to pay it back with property tax dollars that people are going to fork over now with Pittsburgh residents? I say you are abusing your authority by doing that. You should not be using tax dollars to provide loans to developers. Vote against this resolution.
Thank you. So we have a couple of people that. I don't know, Gabriela, you're going to explain this. And then we have a couple of people that they're going to explain how this works. We have the developer, Sean O'Brien. We have our Elers consultant, Greg Johnson. And we have our economic development director.
I'm happy to give a summary. Do you want to kick it off, though, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mike Zimmerman, Economic Development Director for the city of Pittsburgh. And we've been working with North Point Two Development Corporation and Dreamlane Real Estate to bring us more workforce housing product, townhome product, which was one of the priorities that was identified in our 2019 Pittsburgh Housing Plan. This would be at 5078 Hay Farm Road. And this would be a Section 42 WIDA tax credit project. That would bring us 24-unit townhomes. And we worked with them, as well as our financial advisors, Elers and Associates, on the pro forma analysis, which indicated a financial gap of the $330,000. And working with both the developer as well as our financial advisors, we decided to structure that as a deferred loan that would have a repayment period at 15 years. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Sean O'Brien and Lane Manning from North Point and Dreamlane to talk a little bit more about the project. And one other thing I would just point out is the source of these funds is from our housing fund. And everything that was capitalized by the successful closure of multiple TID districts. And this is coming out of our Affordable and Housing Fund as far as the dollars that we would be using for this deferred loan.
Thank you, Mike. So who is going to speak? Oh, Sean?
Yeah, hello, everyone. My name is Sean O'Brien. I'm with North Point Development. We're proposing to build 24 three-bedroom townhomes on Hay Farm Road. We're hoping to start construction in just a few months. We've been working on this project for, I would say, the last couple of years, you know, kicking around the concept and trying to secure other financing sources to make the project financially feasible. At this moment in time, you know, we do have a commitment from a lead lender, WIDA, who would provide the senior debt on the project. And then they would also issue tax credits. Those tax credits would be purchased by an investor. In this case, it'd be First Business Bank. That would allow us, you know, capital to build the project. Between those two sources and the cost of construction, we do have a financial gap. We've been working hard to fill that financial gap through other sources, namely, we've secured a $2 million Federal Home Loan Bank AHP award as well as, you know, $960,000 from the county through their Affordable Housing Development Fund, and then additional $200,000 through their home loan program. These units will be set aside for, you know, families between 30% and 80% of the county median income. And then the rents will be capped to a level that's affordable for those families, you know, at around 30% of their income. And so it is, you know, affordable, you know, you know, rental scenario for these households. And it does provide additional, you know, larger units, which is much needed in Dane County and in Pittsburgh. What we're requesting now is basically the last piece of our financial capital stack to make the project financially feasible. We are in a TIF-eligible area, but I would say that this is a really good, you know, opportunity for the city to partner in a way that does provide gap financing that's desperately needed for the project, but in a way that the city gets paid back. The reason why we're looking for a deferred loan has to do with the tax credit program itself. After the tax credit compliance period, which is 15 years, our investor typically exits the ownership. And there's a recapitalization, which allows us to, you know, then make that payment back to the city at that time. But it does, you know, have that patient capital period of time. But again, difference between, let's say, a TIF that is, you know, forgiving taxes for a period of time that the city does not ever get back. This provides, you know, an opportunity the city does not ever get back, this provides, you know, an opportunity where these funds can be used for other things, you know, down the road. Again, the project, 24 units, we do build all of our housing sustainably. This project would be getting a multifamily new construction energy certification, which means that we're going to have, you know, very energy-efficient units, which is great for us and the ownership. It's also great for the tenants and the utility bills. That typically comes with a significant amount of additional insulation. We also will be going after an EPA indoor air plus certification and a Wisconsin Green Building Homes certification as well. So we do build a very nice housing product, and it is sustainable, you know, which I think is, you know, a very good thing to point out, and we're certainly here to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then Greg Johnson, would you like to add anything else to this?
I'll just emphasize a couple of the points that were made just from a financial perspective. So first, in terms of the review that we completed, that was summarized in our memo and the analysis that was part of your packet. As was noted, the developer had requested a higher dollar amount initially, $118,000. Based on our review, we determined that the appropriate amount was $330,000 to be funded through the deferred loan. Again, want to emphasize, even though this project is being constructed in TID District Number 14, it's not funds from TID Number 14 that will be providing that deferred loan. As has been mentioned, the funding will come from the city's Affordable Housing Fund, which came from TID districts that were extended an additional year to set aside funds for affordable housing and housing stock improvements. Under the TID statutes, those monies that are set aside, at least 75%, is required to be spent on affordable housing. So you are using these dollars for the statutory intent that you're required to use them. And then the deferred loan again gets repaid with interest, gets reinvested back into that Affordable Housing Fund that could be used for other project investment in the future. So that's kind of how the funding mechanism is working on this particular project.
Thank you. Okay, Gabriela.
I definitely support this project. I think it's a really interesting use of our Affordable Housing Fund. I did want to talk a little bit about, just from my perspective and my understanding of how this financing works. So this is our Affordable Housing Fund dollars. These are tax increment district money. We kept the district open for a year. These are districts that were open for 20-plus years, over the, between 15 and 20 years?
Yeah, we usually keep our districts on the shorter end, you know, of it. We're kind of 10 to 15 ideally, but we don't usually extend out to the maximum.
Great. So these districts were open for 10 to 15 years, collected tax increments, helped develop, increased the tax base of the city, and then we kept it open for a little bit longer to put that money into an Affordable Housing Fund, and we closed. So we had about 8 million in the Affordable Housing Fund. The interest rates have been so wild that I believe we had around 8 million. Now we have over $10 million. So I don't know if you guys realize that, but we've gained about $2 million of equity. Misty, jump in here if I'm completely wrong about that, but I'm fairly certain that's accurate. So this money is actually is not even a small, is a small portion of just the interest that we've gained on this revenue since we have had it in the account. So it's really, I work for a housing developer. It's very hard to develop properties, and I know certainly we have, we work with developers that are, that make a profit, but these developers are trying to work on affordable housing, and it's a challenging thing to do. It's not something that a lot of people will get into the business of doing that because it's so hard. But we really need developers that are willing to put it out there, and they have great organizations like WIDA and like the Federal Home Bank of Chicago that's willing to finance these. But I do think it's important for City of Pittsburgh. If we want these projects in our community, if we want affordable homes in our community, sometimes these financing mechanisms are necessary, and I think City of Pittsburgh should invest in that where possible. And we're using this money in an incredibly efficient way, especially since literally this is, this is just interest money that we have on this, on this funding. So I'm excited to see what we do with this project, with our Affordable Housing Fund, largely speaking, but I think this is a really interesting example of what can be done, and I think it is great that the city will at some point recover this money, even though it will be a far, time far in the future, and we can reinvest that at that time. Thanks.
So Nicole and then Jay.
Thank you for that explanation. And sir, I actually had some of the same questions that you did when I was looking at the, at the Ellers attachment. And so thank you for voicing some of those. And I just want to restate then, so, because I saw the 427 per unit, and I was like, that doesn't feel affordable to me. But it sounds like, Sean, from what you are saying, that is not the value. Like, can you give, can you give me an idea of, like, what is the average monthly rent that these units would be experiencing? I know that might be a hard value to put on that, but.
Yeah, is the 426, is that a total development cost per unit that you're looking at?
I believe so. It's the total, total sources and total uses.
Yeah. So, so one thing I'll say about that is, when we're building our projects, the total development cost includes a lot of different things. You know, we have your hard costs. The townhomes that we're building, they're about 1,500 square feet. The hard cost there is about $300,000 per unit. And the difference between that and, you know, the total development cost includes things like civil expenses, architecture expenses, attorney's fees, you know, construction interest that we have to capitalize and pay for the 10-month construction schedule. It includes our developer fee, which is monitored and set by WIDA as what's an appropriate fee for doing this type of work. It also includes an operating deficit reserve that the, you know, the investor wants to see in these projects to make sure that there is belt and suspenders, that these projects are going to be able to operate for the 15 years that they're making their investment. And so that's why you see the costs as a total development cost being that 400,000-plus number, but that's not the actual cost of the unit. And in terms of rent, you know, our first mortgage is sized by WIDA in a way that's not oversubsidizing us as developers, but as a way that the project can be financially feasible for actually a 35-year period of time, because that's how long the term is on those WIDA tax bonds that we're receiving. So, you know, they're doing an underwriting of this project to make sure it's financially feasible for a period of time, and so is our investor and likewise, you know, the county as well. So there's a lot of folks that are looking at these models and making sure that the project makes sense and that it will be successful. And then on top of that, you know, North Point Development, Dreamlane Real Estate, you know, we're backing that. We're backing that financially through guarantees and other things along the way to make sure that this project is successful. The rents, you know, we're going to have five units set aside at 30% of county median income. I think that is about $900 per month. We'll have 10 units at 50% of county median income. That ends up being about $1,500 or $1,600 a month. And then our 80% units rent for about $2,000 a month. You know, those, those are all significant and extremely significant discounts to the market, but the trade-off for the tax credits is that, which generates the majority of the equity for this project, is that we're keeping those rents at that level for a period of 40 years. And so there are increases to, you know, the incomes and rents that we will see on annual basis, but it is really set, set for that household that income qualifies to that income level to be paying an affordable rent, you know, so that they can, you know, save money and spend money on other things instead of being rent burdened and spending, you know, 50 to 80% of their income on housing.
I really appreciate that answer because I think it is incredibly important that oftentimes when we're thinking about housing, three-bedroom units get skipped a lot, which is hard for families and to have kind of that independent living. I have two more quick questions for you, and thank you again for laying out the percentages. You kind of answered my other question. I had a question about the developer fee as well, and you stated that WIDA sets that recommendation. That's correct?
Yes, they set a policy for what they believe, you know, is an acceptable level of developer fee for these projects. They monitor that and, you know, make sure that, you know, developers aren't being grossly enriched by these projects. And I can also say that all these other, you know, providers of financing are doing the same thing. The Federal Home Loan Bank has, you know, strict requirements, you know, on these, on these capital stacks. I mean, if you look at, you know, what the Federal Home Loan Bank is putting into this project on a per-unit basis, or even the county for that matter, you know, there are significant amounts, and those programs are well-established, and they, you know, come with their own set of rules and underwriting requirements.
Awesome. And then my last question, thank you for that. My last question is, just out of curiosity, maybe this is more for you, Mr. Zimmerman. How often does this happen? How often does the city kind of make this deferred loan approach? Is this a relatively new piece? I was incredibly encouraged to hear this is pretty much a fraction of interest that we've made, which is a killer way to use that. But like, how often does this occur?
This will actually be our first time that we're using the deferred loan model, and part of the reason that we're interested in this is that it does get repaid back after that 15-year period, recindication or upon sale, you know, there. So it's, it's kind of expanding the pie of our money. It's being a catalyst for this project. And I have to give credit to Sean and to Lane, because when we first started talking about this project, we indicated that Pittsburgh should be the last source of money in. And they really did their homework, not only with the WIDA tax credits, Federal Home Loan Bank, the Dane County Affordable Housing Fund program, and there was the other source that Sean mentioned. So we're kind of filling the remaining gap, and I think from a staff perspective, that's been part of our strategy, is how do we leverage our dollars with those other financing programs that are out there and where we're not first and we're last in to fill that, that last remaining gap. So I think this is a great example of how we're being really efficient and effective with our dollars to drive a project, you know, forward here. But we think that this is a model that we will look to maybe use in the future to drive a project and go forward. But that's why we wanted to bring it to you tonight, because the action tonight is really to share kind of the approach and the terms, and then your direction to us is to finalize those loan terms as well as then the developer agreement template that we'll bring back to you for that final approval and consideration. But again, I also want to credit Ellers for bringing us this approach and model. We've always done kind of the traditional pay-as-you-go developer bond, but we like how this is going to recycle those dollars for not only this project, but then for future projects going forward. So we, we think that's a good approach.
And I could just add one other, you know, thing in terms of what we see.
Please, David, you already have your three minutes.
Oh.
I think Sean was.
Okay.
No, I think Sean was.
Sean, Sean, that wasn't to you. Go ahead.
Oh, awesome. I was just going to add, you know, one thing that I want to make very clear is that this property, you know, will have, you know, sets value, will be paying real estate taxes on an annual basis. You know, how that, you know, flows into the new open TID and gets used by the city is kind of outside of my purview, but it is, you know, it is a project that will generate tax base as opposed to kind of, you know, what's there currently. And that's kind of where Ellers, you know, did their financial model and, you know, kind of worked, worked to that gap amount based on, you know, what would this project, you know, kind of generate, you know, in terms of tax value over the period of the TID. And then I would just kind of say that, you know, although this is, you know, kind of, again, like Mike said, a temperature check of, you know, is this a way that the city would like to utilize their affordable housing funds? You know, certainly other municipalities have used TIF Affordable Housing Funds, you know, similarly to this. They, you know, also use, you know, park fees, you know, other, just whatever they have in their toolkit, you know, to participate. And so I do, do think this is a very, you know, I think it's a very interesting and unique structure. Again, the biggest benefit is it's a solution where those funds do get paid back.
Can I add something, Sean?
Absolutely.
Oh, who is it? Oh, Lane? Okay.
Lane, yeah. My camera won't come on, but how are you doing, Lane Manning, Dreamlane Real Estate? For those of you who don't know me, I sat on the plan commission. That's how I actually met Sean for the project up the street called Limerick. Sean, if you have a remember off the top of your head, what were the townhouse units per unit at Limerick? Do you remember? I want to say it was like 250, 275?
No, I mean, they were about 200,000, and that was, you know, what, four years ago?
Yeah. So my simple point is just to, you know, can I get the camera now? Yeah, can't do it. Simple point to that is what I've learned in this five years. So since I left plan commission in 2020, this is what I've been kind of working on. I met Sean as we were approving the project at Limerick, just kind of got into that because we were doing my mom, trying to find my mom affordable housing for a senior at the time. And I will gladly say that there's, affordable developers are not laying their pockets. We operate in the black just barely, just to get by for 15 years before that project comes back to you. I pointed out the question asked, Sean, is just to demonstrate the immense cost increases that we've had to go over or absorb over those five years, four, five years, and yet the rents still don't change. So I'm looking at a chart here. The max you can charge for a three-bedroom, 30% units, 982. For 50% is 1636. For 80% is 2618. So the rents stay the same, but the costs go up. So it's been tough to deal with. It's been difficult to wrap my head around that. Like you said, we have to personally guarantee this stuff. So we really appreciate the money in every community, and I'll give Pittsburgh a big piece of credit because as I've done this now in multiple communities, after Mike, working with Mike so long, Pittsburgh and Mike have always had a really good handle on it, and what they're doing to assist developers in doing this is pretty cool. And last but definitely least, we are adding three-bedroom units. I don't know if it's the truth, but I think the last three-bedroom units added in Pittsburgh were the ones that were up the street that we added. So we're trying to do yeoman's work here to our best, just need a little help from the city. Thanks. There I am.
Okay, I have Jay and then Jim. Jay and then Jim and then Donna. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of having some three-bedroom rental units. These are all going to be rentals for, like, forever?
Correct. Yes, the, yeah, with the tax credit program that requires them to be rental units, you know, 30 or 40 years down the line, once all of our land use restrictions have been, you know, released, that, you know, they could be condo-ed off. I think housing policy-wise, though, I think it's always kind of difficult to turn rentals into homeownership situations, especially if it's like a one-by-one. You know, imagine owning your unit and having, you know, renters, you know, in all the other ones, especially if the project's, you know, 30 or 40 years old, the building's 30 or 40 years old at that time. So they typically don't go up that route, but they, they go as rentals.
So at your cost of $427,000 a unit, you're saying that's the total construction cost for these units?
It's a total development budget at the 427, which includes, like I said, a lot of soft costs, you know, capitalized interest to cover the 10 or 12 months of construction, you know, for, for the construction loans that we're taking out on these projects. So it's an all-in total development cost, not, not a hard construction cost.
Okay. And how many of the units did you say would be at the 30, 50, and 80?
Five, 10, and nine, respectively.
So, so there will be 10 units at the 50% AMI?
Correct.
I mean, one of the things that I've complained about endlessly up here is the, the fact that we keep building these units and claiming they're affordable housing, but they really aren't. So in the case of your project, it looks like if you, 10 units at the 50%, how many at the 30%?
Five units.
Five units. So that's 15. That's like two-thirds of these units are definitely going to be affordable housing. A three-bedroom at $2,600, I don't, that seems, that seems a little high to be 80% of the AMI, but somebody must have done that calculation.
And that's not, so I would just want to clarify. So that is the rent limit that was set for a three-bedroom at 80%, but is not the achievable rent that, you know, so let's say that market rent for a three-bedroom could be 25, 2600, maybe 2,800. Affordable units going through all this paperwork, if someone was 80%, you know, AMI, they're not going to rent that. And so our rents are set at about $2,000 for that unit. Could, could we charge more? Yes, we can go up to the 20. Now, the 2,600 also includes a rent, I'm sorry, utility allowance. So when you, when you look at these, you know, income levels and rent levels, the rents are set to, you know, what can someone at this income range afford on rent and utilities? And so Lane listed off the income limits, but you have to back out what a utility allowance is for these townhomes, which is, you know, probably somewhere in the $120 a month range. So we, we can't charge, you know, let's say Lane lists off the 50% at $1,600. We can't charge $1,600. We have to charge $1,600 less the utility allowance. Again, the idea is, you know, folks should be spending up to 30% of their income on housing utilities. And so that's, you know, so in this model that, that works, but as you get to the 80%, there's But as you get to the 80%, there's, you know, no project in Dane County that has three-bedrooms that is, that collects, you know, the, the max rents for that, because you kind of push up into that market rent level at, you know, 2,600 a month.
All right. Now, I had a technical question about the actual construction. You said these are all going to have underground parking?
I did not say that.
Oh.
So we're, we're, we're building and we're working through, you know, the, the final design at this time. So out of the, the 24 units, 18 units will be, you know, side-by-side townhomes with an underground parking garage that I think can hold about 31 cars. There will also be two garage stalls for some ADA units that will be accessible for, you know, families that have disabilities. We'll also have a six, a six-unit townhome that's, you know, straight side-by-side that will just be surface parking. They won't have, they won't have a garage.
I see. All right. Well, I think, you know, based on a lot of the projects that have come before us, I think you've probably come the closest to actually building affordable housing, so I'll support this.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the loan, especially coming out of the TID district. Let's go back in history. 1944, 1949, it was the HUD Act, which the government provided low-interest loans or no down payments for people to buy houses. And that created the suburbs. And the thing about that, people who looked like me couldn't even get them. Then it was the Federal Housing Administration who provided loans. And again, people like me basically couldn't get them. So, you know, when I kind of hear that the city shouldn't be involved in affordable housing, kind of, it makes me kind of think, how many people were against giving those people homes back in the day? My dad worked at US Steel, which is in Fairless Hills, Pennsylvania, where they had Levy Town. He couldn't get a house there, even though it was like five minutes from where he worked. He had to travel hour and a half each, each day. So when we talk about the government being involved in affordable homes, I think it's a good thing. In fact, there should be more of that, but this time, let's not discriminate and make it for everybody, not like back in the day.
Thank you, Jim. Donald?
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to, I don't mean to belabor a, a point here, but, I mean, has things really gotten that expensive where at the $2,000 mark, if we're keeping with the, the equation of having your housing around 30% of your gross income, you need to make at least $80,000 to afford this place? And I mean, I don't know if I would consider that someone making $80,000 necessarily is a person for affordable housing. So I just don't want to, I, I, I see where we're going and I get like what Jim was saying. I just think we really need to, if we could, bring these prices down some, because I think even at that rate, there's people still being secluded from being able to participate in a program like this because the price is still too high for individuals, you know? So, and the 80,000, that's just an average number. That's not taken into account anything else that is out there that these individuals potentially are paying for to be able to subsidize the housing. So I'll leave it at that, but just wanted to put that point on the record.
Thank you. Any other comments? Bill?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to note that this is exactly the type of thing that the Affordable Housing Fund is meant to help with. And in fact, this is probably better than what it, what it's meant for, because we're eventually going to get this money back. And just one other point, I don't know if Sean or Mike or Lane can speak on this, but I read in the Ellers report that 62% of the developer fee is actually deferred and is going to take up to 12 years to, to actually get paid out. I don't know if, is that, is that usual or is that unusual?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to use this term, but to pull the curtain back a little bit, my previous job before joining North Point Development was working at WEDA. And, you know, setting housing policy for across the state. And so one of the ways that we've, we found that we could increase sources for these housing projects without actually, you know, having to come up with a pool of funds, was to allow what's called a, you know, on paper developer fee. So WEDA allows $20,000 per unit in receive fee and $20,000 a unit in deferred fee. And so what, what that does, it allows us to then take that extra $20,000 a unit and earn tax credits on it, which generates more sources for the project without having to come out of anybody's, you know, financial bucket. So when they, when they look at these projects, okay, what is the developer actually receiving? It's, the goal is to be at $20,000 a unit. Now, that's not a guarantee, because if we fall short on sources or there's cost overruns, we have to push all that back into the project. And, and basically allow that the operations of this project over the, you know, period of 15 or 20 years is going to chip that, that deferred fee down and away from the project. And so that's a kind of, like I said, a kind of behind the curtain. I think in all, you know, our fee is, is, you know, less than 7% of the total project cost or something like that, which is, you know, less than what we're paying our general contractors, you know, to provide the services to build it. So, you know, we do, we do structure these to, to basically, you know, try to earn tax credits and more equity by, you know, taking the future cash flow of these projects and, you know, kind of front-loading that, if that makes sense. Or, or maybe I went a little bit too deep there, but I apologize if I went too deep.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Nope. Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-59-25, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pause the motion, Kevin? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be back with, once we've got the developer agreement finalized.
Thank you, Sean, Lane, and Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so where we are now?
Administrator.
Okay, so we are in item six, Administrator Report.
Good evening, everyone. I've got a number of items I want to update you on. I'll start off with some date-related announcements. There will be a neighborhood meeting hosted by the developer, J.T. Klein, in regards to a proposed multifamily development project on Nesbit Road. That meeting will be held this Thursday, March 13th, at 6:00 PM at 6270 Limestone Lane, which is the Limestone Ridge apartment building. With the warmer weather, B-Cycle will begin placing the cycles out in the docks, March March 18th at 4:30 PM is the next Chamber Business After Hours event, and that'll be held at St. Charles Station. Road construction season is approaching. The Sine Road project will begin the Phase Three portion of that project, which is West Clayton Road to just north of McCoy Road on Sine Road, as well as the intersection of McCoy and Sine. That construction is planned to begin March 24th. And Phase Two of the Sine Road project, which would result in reconstruction from just north of East Cheryl Parkway to West Clayton Road, is scheduled to begin April 21st. The Spring Recycle Event is Saturday, April 12th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at City Hall. That's an opportunity for folks to bring in confidential paper shredding and electronics recycling-related items. The tennis courts at-
What, what date is that, Chad?
Saturday, April 12th.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The tennis courts at McKee Farms Park and the pickleball courts at McGaw Park are now open.
Whoa.
The Fire Chief process, there was a round, two-day process held last week, in which a number of candidates came through and participated in that process. The process has been narrowed down to three finalists, and the Police and Fire Commission will meet again on March 19th. Absentee ballots were mailed today. I saw Tracy and her crew wheeling out boxes of them to the mail carrier, so kudos. 2,600, you said? No, so thank you for taking care of all of that work today. As a reminder, in-person absentee ballot, in-person absentee voting hours for that, March 18th through the 21st is 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. March 24th through the 27th, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And March 28th, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then, of course, Election Day is April 1st. Polls will be open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And as a reminder, there are no changes to the polling locations. I had vehicle registration fee information on my list. We kind of talked about that fairly extensively already, but I do want to again mention that city staff had been planning for this resolution with some information that would be shared via our website, our socials, and has created an FAQ. If you go to the city's page right now, you can find that under the announcements. There's a link that you can click on, which will then take you to an additional page where you can click for other information related to the vehicle registration fee that has been posed. As a reminder, there is no March 25th Common Council meeting due to a lack of quorum. And Tracy, our city clerk, has also sent out an email in regards to the council organizational meeting. That is scheduled for April 15th. 5:15 would be the photograph of the council that will begin serving the next one-year term. And the organizational meeting itself is scheduled for 5:30. If you have any conflicts in scheduling for that, if you could please reach out to Tracy and I in the next several days so that we can take that into consideration, that would be appreciated. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope. Okay, so we move to the Mayor's Report, and I have a couple of announcements. One is that, I don't know, you know, but the City of Fitchburg has once again been recognized as the Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation, marking 27 consecutive years of commitment to urban forestry and environmental stewardship. In addition to this prestigious designation, Fitchburg has also received the Tree City USA Growth Award for the 12th year, highlighting the city's dedication to expanding its tree care effort and community engagement initiative. So I want to say thank you to Anna Healy, our urban forester, and the Parks Department for continuing investing in, you know, in our trees. This is great for, you know, for our city. What else? I, Chad and I, we met with the City of Verona and the Town of Verona. I think we are finalizing our EMS AGI agreement. It's going to come to you eventually in the summer. It has to be done before budget time, so. So that one is, as you know, there is going to be a change in our agreement with the city, with the district, and the City of Fitchburg will have to contribute a little bit more funding to the district. So the other, the city administrator and the economic development team, we went, we did a tour with the Subzero Global Campus, the Innovation Campus, last week, and it was very impressive, and we should be very proud of those type of companies that we have here in the City of Fitchburg, and the thing they are doing is incredible. You mentioned a passion, okay? Other thing that I want to mention is my first listening session is when I be in District Three, it will be April 24, Fire Station Number Three at 6:30 PM. So I'm going to, we are going to do some communication outreach, but also invited the Alder from the district and some city staff that they are going to discuss some of the projects that are happening in that district. And also I'm going to share some of the initiative that the city is, is working. HNI, the city received almost 19 applications. I would recommend you to watch the meeting, because they were a great non-for-profit organization doing a great job in the city, and also because eventually you will need to vote. So I would recommend you to watch the meeting. The other thing that I did, I, as you know, that a regular meet with some of the mayors here in Dane County. I met with the mayors, it was in Verona, like two weeks ago, and, you know, and we discussed similar issue that we are, all of us experiencing in our community, like, you know, housing, transportation, you know, all of that. So, and we shared a lot of resources, that is, is great. I feel great to have a group of mayors, you know, on my back. We also have our Fitchburg Faith City Leaders Meeting. I will recommend you to participate. Thank you, Gabriela, for attending the meeting. This is the, you know, it's, it's another way to do networking and to get to know what, you know, other organizations are doing in the, in the community. I participated also in the interviews for the Fire Chief. I was able to interview seven of the candidate, and also participate in the public hearing, public reception. Okay. So you mentioned some of my stuff. And lastly, I want to share with you something that I have been, I think, is an statement that I want to share with you and the community, is that over the past few months, I, like the community, have been reflecting on the officer-involved death of Kevin Price. As I have reflected upon the situation and heard from community members, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the profound impact this tragedy has had on the city. Kevin's family has endured unimaginable loss, and I extended my heartfelt condolence to them as they continue to grieve. This incident has deeply affected all of us, and I want to assure the community that the City of Fitchburg remains steadfast in its commitment to the values of trust, integrity, and accountability. I understand the concern of Kevin Price's family, our law enforcement personnel, and other community members. Each perspective is critical to understanding the full context of this tragedy. I also recognize that our staff, elders, and residents may have a different viewpoint on how the situation unfolded. I encourage you, open, respectful dialogue as we navigate this difficult time together. The City of Fitchburg is committed to learning from this incident and taking meaningful steps to ensure the safety and well-being of all residents. The Fitchburg Police Department is currently conducting an internal assessment of this incident. When this process is completed, the city will review any actionable recommendation of the assessment and make adjustments as necessary. Let us work together and rebuild trust and strengthen our community. Thank you. Okay, so next, we move forward to where we are? Commission and Committees Report. Plan Commission.
We meet next week, March 18th.
Thank you. Board of Public Works, Bill?
I will move approval of Resolution R-4425, approving 2025 Parks Vehicle Replacements.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
Parks Department has a couple of older trucks, a 2002 and a 2011, I believe, that are due to, are scheduled to be replaced. And so this resolution is for the purchase of an F-150 Lightning and a Ford F-350 that will be outfitted with a plow and do a lot of snow plowing. That's the gist of it. Tim, if you wanted to add anything, feel free.
Is any one of these electric?
The F-150 Lightning is, yes.
Tim, do you want to add anything else, or?
No, I think Alder Jessler explained it well.
Okay, thank you.
One quick note. The Lightning price went down from the last time we bought one, so like shocking and wonderful. And the price of the Lightning, the electric vehicle, is actually less than the price of the gas-powered vehicle, which is great.
And also, we can apply to the red light, isn't it?
Yeah, I, it's just wonderful. I feel like we've just come a long way, because the electric vehicles used to be way more expensive, and now they're, they're equal or even sometimes less, which is outstanding. And I'm, my understanding is that they operate very well, the two we have, have been, are really, really well-liked in the department, which is even, which is the best news ever, right? They're usable for our city staff.
And if they want to buy another one electric, it's, you know, it tells why. They're happy. Okay. Okay, any question, comments? All those in favor of Resolution R-4425, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, emotion carries. Sorry. Parks Commission, so Dave is not here. Who is next?
I can, I can do it. I'll move approval of Resolution R-2825, amending the 2024 general fund budget, various Parks Department items.
Second.
This is from, the Parks Department went over budget on certain items, but they had other items in the budget that they could move money around. There was a pretty detailed memo about where the money was being moved from and where the money was moved to. There's also been discussion within the department to how to avoid this in future years so that we're not looking at these overages and the budgeting is a little more accurate. So that is under discussion. Oh, and I'm sorry, finance did approve this. And I believe it's a two-thirds vote is required.
Yes, two-thirds, and also Park also approved. Okay, I don't know. Scott, do you want to? Okay. So any question, comments about this? No? Okay, so we are, we need to do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Jettser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Library Board, Jim.
Nothing to report.
Commission on Aging Well, Donna.
No report at this time. We do meet again on Thursday morning.
Okay, thank you. And then we go to Resource Conservation Commission. And that, oh, and this one is only for discussion. We have Resolution R-4625, is the approval of the city Fitchburg Sustainability Plan. This is a discussion only. We are going to take action on April 8th. Okay? So we have Phil Groupi, our sustainable specialist, and also we have Ted Redmond, our consultant. I don't know how you're going to.
While they're getting set up, I can just give a little bit of background on this. I know Phil has been here at Committee of the Whole, I believe, late last fall to give an update on the sustainability plan. And there was a presentation last evening at the Resource Conservation Commission. If you weren't able to attend that particular meeting, I encourage you to take a look at that on Fact TV, where you can stream it on demand at your leisure. And if you do have any questions for Phil and/or our consultant, Ted Redmond from Pale Blue Dot, we wanted to provide an opportunity for the Common Council to have that discussion with both of those two. And ultimately, coming out of this meeting, if there is any feedback that you still would like to share, please get that to Phil no later than March 18th. So without further ado, Phil.
Thank you. Thanks again for letting me talk a little bit about this. I'll try to take up less time than I did at Committee of the Whole. And, you know, certainly happy to answer any questions if you have them, but I kind of wanted to, because it's been a few months since Ted and I spoke with you, just kind of give a, a rehash overview of what this process is, what the plan looks like. Hoping you all had a chance to review it, but I know it is pretty, pretty lengthy. And what's the best way for me to get this shared up on the screen? Just drag it? Let's just go and duplicate. So, pretty quick background.
Quick background.
Cool. Remix.
Now that's exciting.
Hey, that's, hey, that's kind of lit, low-key.
You might need to mute the sound on your laptop.
I think just getting rid of Zoom altogether was the way to go. Thanks, Scott. Anyway. So what the plan shows is this was an 18-month process. Since the, the period between Committee of the Whole and now, it's closer to about 24 months, but it was about two years ago that Common Council approved $50,000 to seek out a consultant to pursue a sustainability plan. This is something the Resource Conservation Commission had been pushing for the better part of the last 15 to 20 years. I know there's been a lot of stop-and-start efforts to get this going. Getting that funding for a consultant was kind of the, the key factor to get the ball rolling. So once we got Ted Redmond and his firm, Pale Blue Dot, on board, and they've done this with dozens of communities around the Midwest and around the country, climate action plans and sustainability plans, we were able to really, really get moving in earnest on this. And so what it looked like was an initial few months of data collection, kind of getting to know each other, figuring out what the process was going to be like, where we were going to take the lead on things, where Pale Blue Dot was. With that data collection, we provided a lot of background information, both for the municipality but also for the commercial and residential community in Fitchburg. They provided five baseline documents that sort of formed the, the underpinnings, the, the background of what we were doing. Over the coming months, we took all those baseline documents and said, here is our baseline situation. Here's where on a number of different metrics in different categories around Fitchburg. And we got a planning team together of about 25 people, mostly community members, a few staff as well, and a few organizational representatives and, and folks from neighboring communities who have different levels of, of stake in, in Fitchburg. That planning team spent four or five-hour meetings once a month for six to seven months, going through the different stages of coming up with what were our eight broader sectors going to look like? What were the primary strategic goals that we, we wanted to actually quantify and set targets, measurable targets, to try and achieve over the, the coming five and a half, six years of this planned timeline? And then within those strategic goals, what were the different actions that we felt were feasible things that the city might be able to target to help accomplish those actions? I know that, let's call this out right away. One of the things that has been brought up as a concern is that it is a very ambitious plan in its scope, in its scale. 175 different actions to achieve these goals. It is a lot. The, the important thing to note is that those actions are not so much a fixed firm, we are going to do all of those things. Those are kind of a roadmap. That's a pick list, a menu, if you will, of if we want to achieve these things. You know, if we're talking about a 5% reduction in vehicle miles traveled by the end of 2030, there's five or six or seven different action items laid out under that one strategic goal. For here are things the city could do to get there. We could do one of them, we could do seven, we could do 12. There might be some that weren't identified. But the important thing is not so much the number of actions, but the, the strategic goals that are laid out within each one of these sectors. Anyway, then we brought this, this draft plan to Committee of the Whole, got some good feedback there, had some really good feedback from staff as well, and then spent the next several months, both incorporating some of those comments and kind of making some final revisions to the plan, but also at Chad's recommendation, working through an implementation matrix where, where we essentially identified, how do we break these down into different tiers of kind of approachability, achievability? What could we do right now if we decided that was a priority? What might take a little bit more time, a little bit more resources or research? And so we kind of have the three different tiers to help us prioritize, prioritize these different actions. We set out who could be potential partners on, on every single one of the action items as well, what departments would be involved into what capacity. And I'm certainly happy to, to share some of that, talk more about that if you're interested. But then just to really give a quick rundown of, of how this plan is, is laid out, within each one of these sectors that you see here, so transportation, land use, buildings and energy, all the way over to health and safety and sustainable economy. If you go through to that section, you get sort of an overview of where, where we are identifying the priority targets for the city, both the municipality and in some cases, the broader community, to try to make measurable improvements over the coming years. In this case, for, for water, it's, you know, water-related drop in greenhouse gas emissions since that could come from things like our lift stations, our pumps, 6% less water use for the municipality, 6% less wastewater generation, and increasing groundwater protection. And then as you go down for each one of these strategies, in this one, increased water conservation and reduced water and wastewater generation. There's a number of, there's, there's kind of the, the narrative description of where this is all coming from and what we're identifying as the priority targets. But then those potential actions that we could, that we could look to, to make some progress on. So what this, what this allows us to do now, when we say, all right, here's an area that we, we know we need to work on right away. We feel that there's some momentum here. We've identified grants in this area. I can come into this strategy, and I can find a whole list of actions that are, that are possible things to, to work on, either internally with just staff, maybe come to council and ask for resources, maybe look at, at grants or at potential partnerships. And then one thing I really like about this plan that Pale Blue Dot does is at the end of each one of these, at the end of each one of these sectors, they have this what-you-can-do page. This is, I mean, of course, it's for staff as well, but this is for the public. If you're coming in and looking at this plan, this page gives you your action items. So you're not waiting for the city to take action. And certainly, we want to provide an example. We want to encourage and educate and provide, provide incentives where possible. But this is also something that you can just look at this and say, what can I do right now in my life? And I really, really like that, the resources, the different ideas. I think this, this is a really valuable thing that makes it more of a, a community-wide plan and not just a plan for staff to, to focus on internally. What I will say, so that's kind of the, the high-level overview of what the plan is, where, where that is from. I, I did mention that, that working with Chad, with some department heads and other key staff that I think would be heavily involved in this, we did put together this implementation matrix. The one other thing that we did was we, we made a few tweaks to a few action items. And if you're interested, I can call out the specifics, but there were a few action items that we felt, even through the draft plan stage, these could be tweaked a little bit more just to make sure that they feel more, more of a fit for Fitchburg. There were a couple items that it was like, ah, we don't really have that type of a program, or this isn't an appropriate, this isn't an appropriate policy target based on how things work in Fitchburg specifically or in Wisconsin. So we did make a few adjustments there. But otherwise, for the most part, the plan remains broadly unchanged from its draft stage in August when you last saw it. The biggest thing is beyond some of that copy editing and cleaning some things up, building this implementation plan so that hopefully, once it's approved, we can really hit the ground running. Ted, certainly feel free to add anything else in there, or else I'm happy to take any, any questions.
As always, you did a fantastic job, Phil. I'm, I'm happy to just answer any questions anyone may have.
RJ?
Yeah, I didn't get through the whole thing. Because.
You can't. All 100 pages of it.
124 pages is a big bite. But I did go through a lot of it. And I had some questions about some of the things in here. The first one is Strategy TL1, decrease total community-wide vehicle miles traveled by 5% by 2030. So this includes this paragraph. Community-wide vehicle miles traveled in Fitchburg was 265.3 million miles in 2022. Although the city has seen a 6.9% increase in total VMT since 2014, VMT per household has decreased by 15.3%. So the question I have about that is twofold. First of all, why are we using 2014? Is that just because it was 10 years ago? And 10 is a nice round number?
So as part of, Ted, actually, you're a better person to answer this. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, so when we did greenhouse gas inventories community-wide, which is where we get a lot of that baseline data, both, you know, energy consumption, miles traveled, et cetera. We did three subject years. They were years 2014, 2018, and 2022. And we do three years wherever we can so that we get sort of a broader sense of trends in history. And then because we had 2014 as the earliest year, there's a lot of logic to use that as the baseline so that we can talk about it as a continuous history. You know, what may have happened between 2014 and 2022 before we did the plan? And then also, where do we want to end up at? At the end of the implementation?
Well, one of the things that happened between 2014 and now is a global pandemic. And during the global pandemic, car trips decreased by a lot. So the question that I have is that that decrease per household, do we have any idea how much of that is accounted for by changes from the pandemic? And how much is actually conscious? People trying to not drive as much?
I don't believe we were able to parse that out. I think what we would say is that even, you know, whether you're talking about numbers pre or post-pandemic, we know that a, a reduction is necessary in order to hit our targets. I, I wouldn't suggest that nothing has changed from, you know, 2022 post-pandemic to now, but we are still in a post-pandemic world. There is still increased work from home relative to pre-pandemic. So there are some changes that were lasting, and we'll expect to build on those and some that weren't. And we look at different things we can do. You know, if there was a rebound effect, what else do we need to adjust now to maybe overcome that? You know, kind of get that reduction plus again.
All right. Another question that I had, and I'll have some more later, but I just wanted to get these two out there. Strategy TL4, increase battery electric vehicle and PHEV use to 15% of vehicles on the road by 2030. So I, I drive for a living, basically. I drive all over Dane County and many of the surrounding counties doing work in people's houses. I drive a gasoline-powered vehicle because I can fill it up with gas anywhere. And I, I had never driven an electric vehicle before until last week because my vehicle was in the shop. So I had a rental that was, that, that was an electric vehicle. And man, for me, that was a pain in the behind. For one, at my apartment, there is, there are receptacles in the underground parking where you could plug in the vehicle. But the rental vehicle didn't come with a cord. So I had to go to a charge point location. It turns out that City Hall was the closest one to where I live, which didn't bother me except that once the vehicle got down to about a quarter of the charge left, that's an eight-hour charge time. So essentially, what I had to do is I had to drive here, park the car at the charger out there, take a, take a lift back to my apartment, and then wait eight hours, and then take the lift back here to get the vehicle, which was astoundingly unpleasant. Uh, so I think, um, it seems to me, and I don't know what other people's experience with battery electric vehicles is. I mean, I, a lot of people live in a house where they've got a charging station and they can just charge it in their house while they sleep. Um, but a lot of us don't really have that. In, in my apartment building, there's 54 units and there are six places to plug in a battery electric vehicle. So we're not going to get to 15% there. That's barely 10%. Uh, so we obviously need to increase the level of, uh, of putting these facilities into multifamily units. Um, but I think another, I mean, another thing that we're going to need to do is if you're someone like me who gets a rental car and it's a rental electric car, apparently they generally just don't come with a charging cord. You have to go somewhere that already has the apparatus there. So, um, and I looked into buying one, even though I was only going to be using this thing for a week, but, but the cord itself was like $200 and it's like, ah, that doesn't make any sense to me. So, um-
What is the point?
Well, the point is, I think this is an extremely, I think this is going to be an extremely difficult goal to reach, given the current technology. Um, so what do we see as the future of battery electric vehicles? I mean, are they going to get to a point where we can charge them in less than eight hours?
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Yeah, you can.
The short answer is yes.
Yes.
Um, uh, level three charging, fast charging is becoming increasingly common. You'll be pleased to know that Dane County worked with the City of Madison, the Greater Madison MPO, and Fitchburg among, uh, some other municipalities in the outlying areas, uh, on a grant, uh, application. It was called Charge Up Dane County. This was an EV charging infrastructure grant. Uh, the county received $14 million that it is now preparing on a plan to identify locations, uh, priority locations for, uh, helping to fund the, the installation of level three charging. Um, priority areas being areas where, uh, it's clear that there are a lot of trips being taken, uh, particularly in communities where equity is a concern. You're looking at a lot of multifamily areas, you're looking at a lot of, uh, through corridors, um, and, and where, where there isn't this charging already. Uh, so I, I can't give you an exact timeframe on that, but it's, it's an example of something where we've identified that there is an issue, there is a gap, and we're starting to make plans to move forward on, on helping to close it. And that's something that's gonna, uh, uh, increase in the coming years. Uh, I, I also just recently with a growing family, needed to move up from the Prius as the family's largest vehicle. Um, so my wife and I got a, a, a plug-in hybrid SUV and the behavior change was not nothing. You know, anytime you get into a new technology, it, it requires some, some behavior modifications. And that is, you know, one of the action items in here has to do with, uh, an EV driving guide, both for staff, but something we've released to the public as well. If you're considering moving to an electric vehicle, here are some of the, the speed bumps that you might run into. Here's how you can plan ahead for that. You already kind of have to plan when you're making trips, not so much because there are gas stations everywhere, but there are things you have to think about for planning for a gas vehicle as well. Do you check your, your oil and other fluid levels before you hit the road? If you've never driven a gas car before, that might blindside you. And there are similar things with electric vehicles that you need to think about with, you know, maybe making sure that if your car comes with a cord, you take it with you on trips because you don't know when you're going to be without.
You're saying-
So just as one example, there are several different approaches to that, that issue. Um, and, and where there is a combination of technology, infrastructure improvements, and also education improvements, we, we tried to reflect that in the actions.
You're saying that would be a publicly available?
That's the, the recommendation. So within that, that TL, uh, for, uh, four point, um, oh, where was this one?
In, in one of these.
In one of these. Uh, it might've been one of the, it might've been one of the different strategic goals, but, but a, an EV driving guide was, was suggested as an action to, to, uh, create for municipal staff. Now, this has to do with the fact that we are, we have goals set for increasing our, uh, municipal fleet to electric vehicles. And if we're going to do that, we need to make sure that the staff who are responsible for driving these vehicles, um, that they also are comfortable doing it and, and that they're doing it in a way that, that makes the most sense. Um, so if we're going to create a driving guide for city staff, why not make it available to the public?
I think that's super cool because I, I know, I personally, when we bought our electric vehicle, um, which, you know, we did purchase a charging cord and I was like, this is going to be our sparing vehicle. It is by far our most-used vehicle. We have to like take the gas vehicle to make sure we still run it every once in a while. But to your point, there are some behavior changes. Um, I think that the, the rental car scenario is probably a pretty rare one, but a, a fair point to bring up the infrastructure needed around the city. Um, I think the other piece that would be cool to see throughout here is, um, electric bikes, which I feel like are a big piece that's improving. My family and I just bought one today that we're really excited to go use. Um, so I think that would be a cool, but I, I love that it's littered, just to kind of jump on that point. I love that this is littered with things that we can tell community members and city staff and like kind of reduce or reuse that content, if you will, for, for folks. That's super cool.
So to follow up on that, um, so, so let, let's just take a real-life example. For me to charge that car at a level-two station like the ones we have out here, that took eight hours, eight hours and 15 minutes. If it, if those were level-three charging stations, how long would that take?
Uh, 15 minutes.
Under an hour?
Under an hour, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah.
And, and you'll also typically, if you have an EV, you're, you're hopefully able to charge it at home. Even, even with mine, I can do a trickle charge at home just on my, you know, 120-volt outlet and I'd get three or four miles of, of range per hour. It's not much, but when it's charging overnight, that gets me 30 or 40 miles. That covers most of my days. Um, you can get a level-two charger installed at home and now it charges overnight without a problem. Um, a lot of the time, if you own an EV, when you're charging out on the road, it's because you're doing a long trip, or it's because you're just doing a little bit of kind of topping off. Um, so, you know, the, those kinds of a thing. The, the one other point you made, and I don't want to ignore this, was the, just the question about 15% being, uh, maybe an aggressive goal. We did try to, so with each one of these, um, with each one of the eight sectors, all of the members of our planning team, uh, they split up into smaller groups to address these sectors and everyone participated in two different sector, small groups, based on their background, their experience, their interests. Um, they set, uh, the initial goals for those sectors, the initial actions. The whole group came, came together and did review all of these together. And we really tried hard, again with, with Ted's guidance, to make sure that we were setting goals that were ambitious. We, we don't see a reason to set easy goals that it takes no effort to achieve. We want them to be ambitious, but we did want them to be achievable. Uh, and we felt with all of the, the goals within the sectors that they were a balance of ambitious and achievable. We hope we're right. Um, I can't guarantee right now that we're going to hit all 43, uh, strategic goals that we set by 2030. I certainly hope we do. Uh, but every single one of them individually is achievable. Hitting all 43 of them almost certainly will take additional resources we don't have now, will take partnerships, it will take technologies and programs that aren't available at, at, at the current time.
But we're not talking about making people go out and buy EV vehicles by 2030.
Correct.
This is more a less just infrastructure.
A lot of this, and this is one thing that, um, that pale blue dot already included in here as well. Let me see if I can find this, this graph quickly, where they looked at the impact of achieving, of, of accomplishing everything that was, was in this plan. Um, here, this pie chart or circle chart, uh, the estimated greenhouse gas reductions included in this plan. If we were to accomplish everything laid out in the sustainability plan, you can see the, the, the blue arc here, remaining annual emissions of 62.1%. That means we would get 38% greenhouse gas emissions for all of Fitchburg if we do this. And I look at the white, I mean, it looks invisible, but the white arc up here is 13 and a half percent. There's your business-as-usual reductions. That's what we're already slated to hit, just based on current momentum. So already by 2030, we're expecting that we should see a double-digit decrease in greenhouse gas emissions from Fitchburg, just based on existing technology and momentum that's already there. So the 15% EV adoption in Fitchburg, there's already EV adoption without the city having done a lot proactively. And that's going to continue. That technology is already there. It's increasing as, as the early adopters get through this EV stage and they show that it is possible, you're going to start seeing that, that early majority come onboard as well. And the 15% eventually is going to get there with or without our help. The question is, what can we do to accelerate it? And that's what we're trying to identify in this plan.
Thank you. Gabriel?
Yeah, so I, just to contextualize the conversation, I love talking about sustainability. Like, this conversation is awesome, but we could literally talk about this for like 15 hours. And so I was just curious about in terms of the scope of the conversation.
Where's the most question?
What are you hoping to hear from us? Is this, are you looking for changes? Are you looking for suggestions? Like Alder Allen, I don't know if you were suggesting that we lower that target. Um, like, like what is the, like, what is the purpose of this conversation? Are we trying to like give you feedback before, so we can make changes before the, the implementate, before we finally adopt it? Or just so we could focus-
I have my thoughts. I'll defer to Chad first on that.
Yeah.
Questions?
Uh, yeah, I gave my, uh, in the opening, obviously, this was an opportunity to ask , uh, questions and have any discussion you wanted with Phil and Ted, and then ultimately share any, uh, uh, feedback you want considered as it relates to the final draft of the plan by March 18th. So that's, and if there's anything you want to add to that, feel, feel free.
Yeah, I'd also talk for 15 hours about this.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I think that, that certainly if there, if there is anything that just really seems like you feel strongly about, about something, uh, needing to be edited, let us know and we'll, we'll see what's doable. Certainly, as I mentioned, I, I guess I, I referenced this with the RCC last night. Um, we tend to call things plans. We refer to them as plans. We build them as plans. We pass them as plans. I kind of see this as more of a roadmap. A plan feels very fixed, very prescriptive, very much. We have committed ourselves to every single letter and word in this document. And in this case, I think what's more the case to, to Alder, uh, sorry, Vafadari, is that, okay. Alder Vafadari's point about the electric bikes, I don't believe we have something in here specifically about electric bike adoption in Fitchburg. Does not mean we won't pursue it, whether the action item's in there or not. Um, you know, we're pushing our bike share program with B-Cycle, that's electric bikes. If there's an opportunity to attack something that isn't in this plan that will help us achieve these goals, we're going to do it. Um, so I don't want to be, you know, I, I wouldn't worry too much about, yo, you might've forgotten this one action item that could be really great, please put it in. Maybe, maybe not, but it doesn't mean we won't pursue it just because it isn't currently in there right now. This is what the planning team identified, that this is kind of our starting menu and we're going to go from there. But if there's anything that really seems like a substantial need, a substantial edit, please do let us know and, and we want to take a look at that.
I just wanted to say, I think the fact that you went through into an implementation matrix is really great because I, you have a really, like succinct plan about how to move forward on this. And that, in my experience, I've only been around for five years at this point, is rare and it's, it's something I've never seen. So I just feel like this is such an actionable plan. I thought the plan as it was drafted was already very actionable in terms of how specific it was and how well researched it was. But what you've done since that last conversation we had in the fall, just seems like this really takes it up a notch and really allows us to implement these things. So fantastic work, um, for the entire team. I know the city staff across the organization collaborated to kind of decide what those goals were going to be. Um, but I think this is an outstanding plan. And I, and like I, I was the one that put that budget amendment in to get the money for this. And this is far exceeds what I ever expected it to be. Um, so that, and kudos goes to pale blue dot for really leading an outstanding process because I think the selection of you as a consultant made a huge difference in terms of this being so high-quality, but it's readable, it has elements for the community in addition to elements for the city. Um, it's, I, I'm, I'm very impressed with it. Um, I have a very small thing that I'll email you about, but I, on the whole, I just am really, I'm so excited about this. I think it's outstanding.
Thanks.
So great work across the organization and especially-
And echo the, the praise of pale blue dot. Ted has been, uh, really helpful in this. They have a fantastic process built out. Obviously, this, this plan is fantastic, even with the implementation matrix. Uh, Chad asked me to start working on that. I started putting a spreadsheet together, reached out to Ted for help, and he said, oh, we've already got one of those. I sent it to you. Do you want me to send it again? Uh, so I have two of those now, one in my own format and one that's, that's actually pale blue dots build. So, yeah, they, they really have this, um, they've got this refined to, to a science for sure.
So yes, I want to echo what Gabriela said. I, I seen it, I really liked the memo too. You know, I, I started with the memo and then I went to the plan. And I think the plan is very, one of the best plan that I have seen in my years here in the city, you know? The way it is very interactive, easy to read, with colorful, you know, like, uh, it's not boring, you know? So I like that, that, that it's, it's very interactive, you know? When you start reading the plan, um, and, and I would say, yeah, this is, this, and we are doing some of the stuff here, you know what I mean? This is a great thing that some of the, in the, what is tier one that you call? Some of the stuff that we already doing as a city. And, and I like that we have different tiers and, you know, I like that, you know? So this is what I say, yeah, it's a roadmap. Um, and there is a lot of things that we can be doing in the next couple of years with this plan. And, and I think that I would say, yeah, this is great. I want to say thank you to you and to Ted. Um, um, you know, I was very impressed with the plan, to be honest. Yeah. What else?
Jay?
Yeah, just, I don't mean to keep harping on the electric vehicles, but I kind of do. Um, so, uh, in the, in the, in the action section of this, um, a lot of these action items are, uh, are focused on city-owned facilities for locations of charging stations. Um, I feel like we should add, uh, something that, uh, where the city could incentivize other business owners to provide charging stations that could be accessible to the public. For example, we've got three quick trips in town, we've got a Super America, and we have other places like that where, I mean, the quick trip near my apartment, that'd be a great place to have a charging station, you know, a level-three charging station. So, um, I think we should try to encourage that and maybe provide some kind of incentives to those, to those private, uh, organizations to, um, provide this service because, um, I mean, it could be beneficial to them too. I'm sure they, I'm sure they get a percentage of whatever the charging is. So, um, I would, I would, I think we should probably stick that in as a recommendation. So you can wordsmith it however you want, but I would like to, I, I think that's a good idea.
I, I would at, at least take a look at action items three, four, and five under that TL4 and see if they're similar to what you're thinking. And, you know, I'm definitely interested in, uh, in a lot of these areas, and this is one of them, looking at what specifically we can do to incentivize action.
I, I did look at those. And I, you know-
Okay.
Number five kind of gets close to it. I don't really know what a, um, what, what was the thing in here? You said, in number two, you said utility pole, electric vehicle charging. I don't even know how that would work because you, well, you're going to pull off on the side of the road and just charge on the shoulder?
Well, where utility poles are near developments, it's, it's a, a, a quick and ready way that you can put a, you can mount a charger onto a utility pole, have an extension cord you pull down.
The City of Madison is doing that, isn't it?
They are. They're doing a pilot, I believe with MGNI right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any other question? Because we need to move on with our agenda. Or you can email your question to Phil in the meantime.
Yeah, feel free to reach out.
Yes, and you have all the months to go over there.
If you want to call and chat, I'm generally available for that.
Yeah.
I also would say that I hope that over the coming years, whomever is the council president, we can have some conversations in the committee as a whole about what's happening with the sustainability plan. Obviously, RCC is a great place for that too, but every once in a while, it'd be great to check in just because-
Oh, you want to go like and review it?
Yeah, like kind of check in and see where we are.
It will be part of the implementation as well as that I'm going to keep, uh, keep up to speed with Chad and with department heads on what the best way is to manage this internally with staff.
Yeah.
If it is just that I'm kind of spearheading this and, and meeting more frequently with them to check in on items, um, or if we want to bring back a city green team, you know, we have to decide what, what that's going to look like in terms of the, the staff oversight of this plan.
Yeah.
But certainly, yeah, we expect that we'll be reviewing it every couple of years for, for progress, if not every year. And I wouldn't, uh, I'd expect nothing less from council as well.
Yeah. And just one other broad note, that I think the way this plan moved through the city process was really well done. Like, we were able to check in on it a few months ago, checking in on it again before it's coming back for a vote. It's gone through the committee that was most relevant to it multiple times for feedback. There was a community task force that worked on it. I just thought the, the process overall, both from like that construction of the plan and also for how it was moving through approvals, really was well done. And I would love to see that where possible for more of the plans that we see. Um, I think we've, we've learned a lot over the years about approvals that went badly, but I think this was, learned a lot of lessons, I'm sure, from other ones, but this was, went really well. So, thank you.
Okay. So here, Nan, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you very much. And I just would like to say that pale blue dot's been very thankful to work with the city and very specifically Phil. Phil has done a really robust job. So you've got a good staff person there. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, so next we continue with our agenda and we are moving to item G, Transportation and Transit Commission.
Before we go there, I would just like to, uh, let everybody know that this was not the only agenda item last night at RCC.
Oh, sorry. It's our bill. Okay.
Um, importantly, we led off with an interesting, uh, project. Jim Tingem, one of the commissioners, is working with a professor, Orin Iden, from St. Louis University. And, um, they've got, uh, these sensors that they can put in your recycling carts.
Oh, really?
And they can monitor how full it is, um, and they can identify the contents and with a very high ac- rate of accuracy, tell you what percentage of the stuff in that cart is actually recyclable.
Oh, my-
And they're looking to partner with the City of Fitchburg on this. So you can imagine, uh, the data that you get back, um, you know, he, he threw up a map and he showed where all of these sensors are. And you could see, okay, there's certain areas of the neighborhood where- areas of the neighborhood where.
They need to, we need to do better education.
Everything is very clean and certain other areas where there's a lot of cross contamination. So you can adjust your, your routes to pick up all the clean stuff first, and you can target some educational outreach in the places that are non-compliant.
How much?
Zero dollars.
Okay.
Because this is fully, fully funded by grants.
Okay.
So it would just be whatever staff time is involved and whatever coordination is required with Pelletary. So these devices could be put into dumpsters at multifamily places as well as inside the, the carts in single-family homes.
I got to, I will ask you a logistic question.
Yes.
When you take that cart to the curve, you need to remove the sensor?
Nope. It is, it is screw mounted to the cart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's not going to wind up in the truck.
How long, how long does it last? Does it need to be charged or?
Um.
Must have some kind of battery in it.
Yeah, he told, I don't remember off the top of my head what kind of schedule that requires. One thing I do recall though is that there's a camera in there and that's, you know, so they're, they're able to, they've got an AI model onboard on the unit. And so the camera takes the pictures, goes through the AI model, the AI model determines whether it's truly recyclable, and that information is sent back to the main server. So the actual photos of the contents remain inside that cart. So there's no issue with privacy, for instance.
So how many sensors?
I think a pilot, he said, would be about 100 units initially, but eventually they want to deploy like 500 to 600 of these per month.
Whoa. Okay. Interesting. Yeah.
So Jim is working with Professor Iden, and they're going to get, all they would really need is a letter of, from the city saying that we're interested. So Jim is working with Ben Schulte, who will be working with Chad presumably.
But do we need to, they, they are in charge of installing those in the carts and everything, isn't it?
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how all of that's going to work out, but.
And for how long they're going to take measurement? You know what I mean? It's for a.
And I think to add to that, how, just the data security and I'm sure there's a whole thing of like, the data is stored and secured and whatever.
I hope they are not listening.
I don't need to be judged about my lack of following the rules of recycling, although you could judge me. It's probably not.
Yeah. And no, that's, you know, it's valid questions.
It's such a cool initiative. I think those would just be the questions that we would ask.
Right.
Because I'll sign up.
There's a fairly, yeah, and it would be an opt-in situation. So it is a fairly quick turnaround time. They need to know by, I don't know, sometime in April.
April 4th.
Yeah, April 4th. So if there were to be anything more than just a letter from the city saying we're interested, I don't know if we would need to have, if, if we needed to have a resolution, if we could do that at the March 19th COW or something.
I think it's a very neat idea, and we need to, I love it. I don't know.
Does that procedurally require a resolution? Or can we just say, we're interested and would like to be considered?
Ben Schulte reached out to me this morning, and we need to get more information from the, the group on the program to determine what specifically the city's commitment is and role in this process is. And once we have a better idea of what our commitment is, we'll be able to determine what process would be best utilized to offer that letter of support, since it does seem as though there's interest in the council, from the council in, in participating in this.
Yeah, I think it's a cool, yeah. And I know the people involved in this grant, so, and they are top-of-the-line researchers, so. Any other comments?
Ben walked us through the MS4 draft annual report for 2024. Reminder again that the shred event is April 12th, 8 to 11.
Are you looking for volunteers or no?
I was just going to say that. That's excellent that you brought that up. Yes. Anybody who would like to volunteer is welcome to help out with that event. We also are planning the waterway cleanup, and so that'll happen in April as well. You know, the 12th is the shred event, the 19th is the day before Easter, so we're avoiding that. We're almost certain it's going to be the 26th, but there's a chance it'll be the 5th. So hopefully, that decision will have to be made fairly soon. So be on the lookout for that. And then a couple other updates from Ben. We collected over 700 pounds of holiday lights for recycling.
Really?
And the, the Lions Club NextTrek's plastic bag collection is getting close to their 1,000-pound goal.
Wow.
That's the end of my RCC.
Thank you. Seda?
We met a couple of weeks ago, got some development updates from Mike and a little bit of discussion about housing.
Okay. Sorry, I skipped Transportation and Transit.
Which is okay, because we haven't met since last time. We will meet this Thursday, and we will be discussing the city's transit plan, multi-use path, street crossings, and railroad quiet zones.
Okay. Fun, fun. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee?
The last meeting was on the 18th. We meet again on March 26th.
Okay.
There's also, at, at that time, there's an ag listening session.
Yeah.
At Four Winds Farm from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So if you are not busy with any spring break plans, I will be there and am going to be super excited to hear kind of some feedback in a beautiful space also, if you haven't been to Four Winds. It's really gorgeous.
I presume you'll be taking your new e-bike.
Oh, my gosh. If it's not snowy, because I don't bike in the snow, but absolutely, I'll be taking my new e-bike.
Okay. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, Joe?
Our next meeting is on April 2nd.
Thank you. EMS Commission?
Next meeting is March 13th, 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
You already did the report from my committee.
Oh, you can repeat it.
Okay, we got 19 applications that we'll be voting on. You might want to watch the meeting.
Good job, Jay. Anything else or no? Jay? From that committee?
No.
No?
That was, 19 applications was enough for a meeting.
Okay, okay. When are you planning to, to decide?
The first week of April, probably April 2nd. I don't, I don't, the meeting hasn't been posted yet.
Okay. Thank you. Housing Advisory Committee?
A move approval of resolution R 2525, approval of a contract between the city of Pittsburgh and Sustained Dane for implementation of Phase 2, Project 1 of the Efficiency Navigator Program.
Second.
Housing advisory approved and finance approved.
Okay. What about the Board of Public Works?
Board of Public Works approved.
And Seda?
Seda approved.
Okay. Who is going to present this?
Yeah, I can talk about it. We, so we, we approved this a while back, the Efficiency Navigator Program. We approved the funding to get prepared for it. They have done all of the applications, you know, looked at the different properties, chose property owners, and have actually done the first round of, actually, I think they've done all the analysis on, on what the projects will cost to improve the energy efficiency. This first round of phase, the phase two is the implementation. Project 1 is the projects that are a little bit easier to bid out, easier to get done. The second phase will be projects that are a little more complex and need some more time on bidding things out. And the timeline, anyway, so, so this is the, this is the approval to do the round one. They will probably start right away, and they said they could be done as soon as like a month from now. It's really active. And I'm going to throw it over to Claire.
Joyce?
Oh, I, yeah. Oh, Joyce, oh, Joyce, please, if you want to jump in and do an introduction.
And you can introduce the rest of the people that were involved. Joyce?
Well. Excuse me, I'm here, but I, for some reason, my.
There it is.
Oh, my goodness.
Don't I have the most beautiful camera of all? So I, first of all, would love to thank Claire and Leslie for hanging out with us for the last two hours. I appreciate you taking the time. This, we're pretty excited about this resolution to bring forward the first phase of two phases of projects. Leslie and Claire, Leslie is with Elevate, who did the assessments and provided the background for the request for the improvements. And Claire is with Sustained Dane, and she is managing the, the projects for us. So I guess I would just entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comments?
I just, I have a.
Nicole and then Jay.
Sorry, Jay, I didn't see your end. It, on the agenda, it says, oh, shoot, I just navigated away from it. It said with conditions from SEDA, but then I see a letter saying that a member of SEDA had questions and I think was happy with the answers. So does that mean in the referral sheet, there are no more conditions left from SEDA?
Yes.
Okay. So this is fully approved as is stated.
Indeed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jay?
So in your packet, you've got the full list of all the projects that are being done here. I think it's around $300,000. Is that right, Mike?
Joyce?
That's, Jay, that's incorrect. This is just, this is just the first projects.
Oh, it's seven.
It's not all of the projects.
All right, yeah. So one thing that, that hasn't been mentioned enough, and it came up at the SEDA meeting, is that the landlords who are participating in this program are not allowed to just jack up their rent after this stuff gets done. So there are some, there are restrictions as to what they can do to keep these units affordable, just with some better efficiency projects.
Okay, good to know. Any other question?
I'll just clarify that too, Jay. They can raise the rent to the HUD limits, within the HUD limits, but they cannot go over. And they sign a five-year community benefit. And the benefit actually, so one of the qualifications for this project is they have to be at 80% AMI or less. And the tenant is responsible for the utilities. So they are the, they receive the direct benefit, the tenant. So I just wanted to clarify that because I, I think that there was some questions previously at some other committees where there was an assumption that the real benefit is the, to the property owner. But it's really, yes, there is a benefit to the property owner. However, the direct benefit goes to the tenant with the reduction in rent or in utility payments. Excuse me.
Okay. Any other question, comments? Nope? Okay. So all those in favor of resolution R dash 25, dash 25, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. When next, we move to Landmark Preservation Commission.
We have no report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet this Thursday at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Ad hoc Community and Equity Committee?
We meet again next Tuesday afternoon or evening.
Any other comment? Oh, we didn't mention. Okay. Then we move to the standing committees and reports. We will start with Finance Committee.
I will start with the resolution. A move approval of resolution R 5125, ratifying the 2025 to 2027 collective bargaining agreement with WPPA.
Second.
I'm going to have our administrator give a report on this.
Finance approved, correct?
Oh, finance approved, yes, thank you.
So the city began negotiations with the police union last fall. The negotiations team from the city consisted of the mayor, our labor council, city administrator, human resources director, finance director, as well as elected representatives from finance and personnel committees. Ultimately, a tentative agreement was reached on a successor contract that would cover years 2025 through 2027. The police association ratified the contract on February 19th. And you'll note in the packet, all of the changes to the contract are noted. And I'll call out specifically that PTO, paid time off, was, a transition will be made to that, which would be aligned with all the non-represented employees. We are adding the existing annual wellness day memorandum of understanding to the contract as well as a couple other existing MOUs. We're replacing the current longevity bonus with a longevity-based pay structure, which will be applied to a base rate of pay as a percentage based upon the officers or detectives' years of service specifically with the city of Pittsburgh. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
I was having trouble finding what the actual pay rate is.
It's there in there.
So if you look.
Down on page 16.
Yep. 16, 17, 18 of the contract indicate what the pay rates are.
All right. So it looks like even under this contract, and this is just something for us to keep in mind, none of our police officers are at 80, 80% of AMI. They are, even a 10-year officer is still below what the 80% AMI is. Or, I'm sorry, they're, a 10-year officer is just about at what the AMI is. But if you look at most of these salaries, even an officer up to three years is still not going to be able, is still not going to be at 80% AMI. And that's why we have so few of our employees who live in the city of Pittsburgh. And this is something that's been a concern of mine for a long, long time.
Well, this is why, you know.
We can't fix it right now.
No.
But I just want, I just want us to be aware that we're hiring new police officers, academy police officers, at less than $60,000 a year.
And this was part of the referendum, you know, that we didn't support, the, the community didn't support was also to, you know, to accommodate some of those.
Yeah, some, but some of it is, we got to find, we have to find a way. And this isn't a Pittsburgh problem to solve, it's a national problem to solve. We have to find a way to bring the cost of housing down. This is, this is dumb.
Okay. Yeah, we understand that. Okay. Any question, comments? No? And I want to say thank you to everyone that participated in this process. It was a long process, a lot of hours. Thank you, Donald, Gabriela, city staff, Sarah, Chad, Misty, and our, who was there? And Troy, our lawyer. So, so this one is the first one. I hope we have the, the other one soon. Okay. All those in, do, where am I? Oh, here, sorry. All those in favor of resolution R dash 51 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Personnel Committee?
Our next meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services?
We don't have anything to report.
Do we have anything unfinished business? No. So we move to new business. We have a couple of direct referral. The first one.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah?
I'm so sorry. Just to go back, the Personnel Committee tomorrow, I have that that was canceled. Was that not canceled?
I kind of un-canceled it because.
I'm cool with that. Okay.
We had an, we had an agenda item that needed to be discussed. It's only one.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure we weren't, thank you, Donald. Sorry, Mayor.
It's fine. Okay. So.
I can handle these.
Yes.
A move approval of resolution R 5625, amending the 2025 budget for various funds 2024 carryovers.
Second.
Finance Committee did approve. This is something that we do annually. There were some slightly updated guidelines that are laid out in the memo by Misty. We, basically, you're amending it to allow to use that 2024 money in the year of 2025. There are pretty strict restrictions on what, why we move the money over, but it's really just because some of these projects take multiple years to go for it or for whatever reason, the staff wasn't able to get it done. And we really need to be able to utilize that money in the next fiscal, or in the next calendar year. There's about $46 million of carryovers total. About 42 million of that, 42 million of that is capital projects. Much of it is the police station, so that's why the number is so high. And, yeah, so if you have any specific questions, hyper-specific questions, Misty is here, but this is a pretty standard. We do this annually.
Can I ask a question, Misty? You know, in the TID closure excess increment section, I didn't see the, I think we allocate some money for the ordinance change. It was almost half a million dollar.
I believe that's in the 2025 budget. So it's not something that would be carryover.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay. So one more, my question, one second. Any other question, comments? Nope? So, one more, my question, one second. Any other question, comments? Nope? Oh, we need to do roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
A move approval of Resolution R 5725, authorizing legal services in defense of Hy-Vee Inc. Excessive tax assessment lawsuit.
Second.
Finance Committee approved. This is the, a new lawsuit, although we've seen ones like this before. This is the 2024 suit. One of the differences, this is funded through TID closure money. And one of the differences from previous years is that the staff can now redirect some of that money that we allocate towards expert witnesses if we do go to trial and we need those witnesses. So, just makes it a little bit more streamlined administratively. I don't know if Valerie has anything to add.
Yes, Valerie is here. Oh. Is she here? Okay.
Yep, I'm here, oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add, mostly just here to answer questions. But again, I just wanted to mention, this is an excessive tax assessment lawsuit. The Hy-Vee assessment is set at 16 million. They claim the assessment should be set at, well, 10 and a half million. Ultimately, the city has prepared for trial this type of case with Hy-Vee twice. Once for tax years 2019 and 2020, and then again for tax years 21 and 22. We are confident that we were going to prevail, but unfortunately, perhaps fortunately, depending on how you look at it, Hy-Vee dismissed those, both of those cases, kind of one almost on the eve of trial and one shortly before trial. So, we haven't had a judge take a look at this case and make a determination. But this is, I guess you can call this Hy-Vee Round 3.
Any question, comments? Which tax years is this for?
This is for 2024. I won't be surprised if this ends up being 24 and 25. That's not unusual, because while we're preparing the case, because these cases can take, you know, two, you know, one and a half, two, even potentially three years to go to trial. And so, a lot of times, another tax year will get wrapped into it. And that's actually a good thing, because it's cheaper to try two cases at once, or two years at once than two years separately.
Okay, any other question, comments? Oh, we need to set up the vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, Misty. I think we are at the end of the agenda. So, now we are going to Item 12, is Aldi District Report. And I want you to tell me that something that happened in your district that you want to share with your, in your district. And then, I have another, and the second question is, if money is no an issue, what would you like to do in your district? Or bill something? I'm sorry, but I am, you know... I'm going to start with bill. You have time to think. You can do it as a team, too.
Okay, we both mentioned.
Okay. So, something that happened, or will happen, or...
Or something that happened in your district in the, from the last month, and something that, if money is no an issue, we would like to see in your district.
Something that happened, well...
Okay.
I'm not entirely sure what happened in my district.
I can start.
Okay, go ahead, go for it.
So, yesterday, I was able to go to Tingles, it's graphic design, their 25th anniversary. They actually moved to a different location. They're now in Hattery Hill area, but I think they were in District 2 previous to that. They were just in the Summit Credit Union building. But it's been a, it's a 25-year, small graphic design business. Just a lovely family, lovely employees. All her old employees that had moved on all came back. And we, I learned how to play spoons again. I hadn't played that in years. So, it was really one of, it was just such a charming company. So, if you're looking for graphic design, they're a local Pittsburgh company, and I've heard that their work is outstanding. That's my local update. And then, in terms of things to fund, oh, man, I mean, I feel like I'm going to probably miss a big one, but...
Okay.
I mean, I would like us to see electric vehicle infrastructure. If we had no, I think that would be a huge piece in terms of executing the sustainability plan. And then, Mickey Park, I even, the kids, the kids, the kids crossing, redoing that, I think, was important and something to overdue.
Do you want to add anything?
I guess one other thing that happened, the same general area, the blue light in Pick and Save's parking lot appears to have disappeared.
Okay.
And in terms of funding something, money is no object. I guess, well, I would really like to see the expansion of transit and have the B and the 65 and the 75. I'll meet up at Triverton Pike there. And I'll throw in a little bonus that the, the old Ben Vinuto site should get rehabilitated as, you know, multi, vertical mixed use.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Joe?
Team Center?
Tulay.
Hello?
Thank you for...
That's funny. Yes, of course, stating the obvious. So, I would say something that happened in, not only in District 1, but it's happening regularly, is, I just want to highlight Voces de la Frontera. It's a nonprofit organization that focuses on advocacy for immigrant communities. As you probably know, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of misinformation about the presence of ICE throughout, since the inauguration of our current president. And it's causing a lot of fear in immigrant communities. And having an organization that not only kind of responds to those fears, has a hotline available if somebody thinks that something like that is happening, but also has been providing training to hundreds of, not only folks from immigrant communities, but also allies and service providers on understanding what their legal rights are if approached by a federal immigration officer. I've been through the training at least six times, and I've also been trained as a trainer. So, if there is somebody that is interested in having that training delivered, please reach out to me, and I would be glad to do that. I, I think it's just important that we have valid factual information and that people are kind of prepared to understand what to do. One of the things that surprised me is that a valid form of identification is actually some sort of an organizational card with your picture on it. And also, the fact that federal immigration officers can actually withhold information or present kind of incomplete information, like saying that they're the police, rather than kind of openly identifying themselves as federal immigration enforcement officers. So, if anybody on council is interested in taking one of these trainings, they're offered quite often. And I would be glad to refer you to staff at Voces. They're incredibly competent and thorough in their information. And trainings are also offered in both Spanish and English. So, that's not only for my colleagues, but also for the public.
Okay, thank you. Jay?
Well, what's happening in my district this week is fire.
Fire?
Yeah. We're doing prescribed burns left and right.
Yeah.
So, there was, there were a couple that happened today, and there's a couple more that should be happening by the end of the week.
Second question.
Yeah. If I, if money were no object, what I, what I would want to see happen is the activation of the rail line for passenger rail. So, some of you might not know the history of that. We, when we did the comprehensive plan, we were talking about rail buses, which have the ability to go on the tracks. They have those hinge-down wheels. And that rail line goes all the way from Rockford, Illinois, where, and it actually goes a little further south than there, where it can connect with the, with the, the CTA trains. And it goes up through the, through the Capitol, right downtown, right underneath...
No, the, yeah.
No, it's under...
The Monona Terrace.
Monona Terrace. It's underneath Monona Terrace. And it actually has a way of connecting all the way up to the airport. And this would be a great transportation corridor that would get a lot of cars off the road. So, I would love to see that.
Okay. Thank you. And Donald?
I don't have one, other than the fires. Like Jay has, it's been pretty quiet in District 3. As far as things I'd like to see, probably some more, since we're, District 3 is one of the spaces where a lot of, like, residential things are going up. Maybe increase more like affordable housing and things for individuals to be able to move to Pittsburgh and be able to live accordingly. And then, potentially expansion, expansion of the Bus Rapid Transit System to East Shore Parkway, or just that, like, that drive, for more increased traffic to the Senior Center and City Hall and the library. Because those have been some things that we've discussed a lot about. And just getting some, potentially, I mean, it's not in my district, but getting some, potentially, some specific transportation for the seniors.
The senior, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be all.
Okay.
Nothing in the district is that we had to burn, too. But if money was no object, just the expansion to broadband into rural areas. Because I think economically and everything else that you could do with broadband, I mean, I think it's very important. But it is very expensive.
I can't pick just one idea. So, like, a practical idea, if money was no object, was fixing the roads. We both were arguing over who got to say that one. So, thank you, Jim. You're such a gentleman. What?
Roads?
All the roads, yeah. Just fixing the, like, Irish Lane, all, everything to, also, right. And if, and if we could turn back the clocks, do better planning unlike stormwater. Because I think the planning was done at the appropriate time, at the appropriate level. But now I'm just bending the rules of time and space. If I really had all the money in the world, I would somehow make subsidized, more affordable childcare. Because I think that's something everybody in the city could benefit from, and something I personally feel a decent amount.
Okay. Thank you very much for your insights. I appreciate that.
And, oh, one last thing, since Nicole brought it up. Like, not only subsidize it, but I think we need to figure out a creative way to pay childcare workers a higher wage as well. Because the population is growing,